Let's, if we can go ahead and get started. We're on a, we've got about 30 minutes and we've got three words we have to deal with. So, no, it's, it's not that. My name's Al Williams. I start quickly by saying, why in the heck am I standing here? And the answer is, for now more than a decade, I've argued that we've not done a very good job of telling the story of why Scripture leads us to be opening and welcome. And so you rant on that for a while and pretty soon people say, well, you do some of this. So that's, that's one. Second, if we go to the next slide, and if you'll show me where to click, okay. I had been part of a Bible study group that had started in this class. Bob and others here were involved in, in starting that. And I'd been involved with that for a long time. At the time that the ELCA had the big controversy in 2009 with the passing of acknowledging what we see as the way to welcome, there were those that were ranting about, you know, we're throwing out the Bible. Now, to be fair to the Bible study group, it had gotten really diverse in the years. We had several Catholics and Baptists and Assembly of God and, you know, people inviting their friends. So it got a lot bigger than Lutheran, for sure, and ELCA, for sure. But at any rate, there was a lot of ranting of, you guys are throwing out the Bible. How can you continue to do that? And so, one of the, one of the guys that was in there, who had been here in the past, wrote a paper called "Here I Stand", and it was about a five or six-page paper saying, this is, this is why you're wrong, basically. And so I said, you know what? I don't think we're throwing out the Bible. So I had recently retired and said, I'm gonna look at this in some detail. And so I had an occasion recently to pull that back out. That was written in about 2009 or 10. And I said, you know, I looked at it and I said, you know, that's some pretty good work. Whoever did that, you know, so, but at any rate, so that's, that, I responded to that with a serious look at it, to saying, okay, I'm not coming at it with an agenda. What does the Scripture say? Or just as importantly, what does the Scripture not say about this subject? And so that's what, that's, that's how I happened to be here. So, we talked last week about what is the Bible. I thought I'd make it a little more Lutheran. We talked about Word of God, Word of life. I hope that's not unfamiliar to folks here. The other thing the ELCA says, which is, I really, really appreciate, the more I reflect upon it, is God breathed, the Scriptures are God-breathed. His Spirit is somehow involved there. That's not saying, this is literally, you put this in history and all the things we talked about last week. I would add, for my own sake, sacred and holy, again, that's not saying that it's a literalist, but there's somehow, God's Spirit is there in breath. And so for me, I added those words. So that's my words, not, not anyone else's. We talked about hermeneutics last week. So, and she talked about the importance of, you have to have your own. Just a fancy word to say, how do you go about the process? What's, what's your plan for going about the study? And so this is mine. You may have another, and I'm not here to convert anybody to the way I see it, but I will, I'll share with you what I've done, which is, first, look at the Bible's macro story. What's the big story of the Bible? Secondly, seek to understand the cultural setting at the time. Third, what is the message of the larger section besides these little verses we're pulling out? And, and lastly, and probably most importantly, what would the passage, how would it be heard by the first reader or the first hearer of that passage? And then we get to Luther's questions, the fancy word exegesis, but it's really your confirmation question. What does this mean? So that's, that's my approach. Little trivia, I'm a mathematic, well, I'm an engineer by training, but I liked math a lot, and that's how I wound up being an engineer. So some Bible trivia, 66 books, that's the narrowest group, if you include the Apocrypha, there's a lot more. 1,189 chapters, 31,102 verses. Check me on that next week. Let me know if I counted right. 19 of those verses, 19 of the 31,000 are what are called clobber verses. And if you haven't heard the term, that's verses that people use to clobber people on sexuality issues. So we're gonna look at all of those. I'm not gonna look at, I'm not gonna look at all of those myself, I'm gonna, but I'm gonna share with you what they are. So we'll, we'll go on from there. So this is the clobber verses, and I put the broad story with, with the ones that I'm not dealing with, basically. Genesis 19, the story of Sodom, you know, you've got Lot, the two angels come, they're in the gates of the city, he says, come and stay at my house. And then all the people come and say, we want to know, send them out, we want to know them. We wanna abuse them, we wanna rape them. That's what we got in mind. That's the story. That story, interestingly enough, is three of the eight clobber verses, because when you run down to Judges 19, read those stories side by side, the characters change a little bit, but it's the same story. And, and then the Jude passage, which is in the New Testament, that's in the part that I was supposed to speak to, is simply a reference back to that Genesis 19 story. So those three we'll set aside, and if you have issues with that, Chair, we'll, we'll deal with that next week. The other, the other two, the second two, Leviticus 18:22 is often quoted by those, "You shall not lie, a man with a woman," you know, and, and then the Leviticus 20 is, "If you do that, we'll kill you." So that, we got that taken care of. If you're gonna do Leviticus, everybody in this room, we need to take our clothes off because none of these clothes qualify. If you've got any tattoos, if your children have ever not respected you, you need to kill them. So that's what you're signing up to if you're gonna take Leviticus. From chapter 17 to 26, I believe it is, is called the Holiness Code. There's a lot of stuff to read there, but it's, it's a lot of stuff that in that time, in that context, with what they knew, made sense. Like today, we don't, we don't see that. So those, I don't wanna get into next week's work, but that's, that's, that's what that is. So then you get down to, I've spoken all of them, but the three without anything. So that's our work today. And so, the ones with the little brackets, Romans 1, 1 Corinthians 6, and 1 Timothy 10 are what I'm gonna deal with today. Now, the second two of those, 1 Corinthians and 1 Timothy, you have a list of, of vices, bad things, murderers, rapers, mother and father killers, those kinds of things. And in that list, there are actually, in the Greek, there are two words, it gets translated differently depending upon which translation you look at, but there are two Greek words that are included there. And so we'll look at those. And the Romans passage stands alone as a, as a different passage. So we'll, that's, that's where our work's gonna be, those, those three passages. So. Back, this is just a reminder, this is how we're gonna plow through it. We just looked at that. So this is, again, I'm stepping into my interpretation, so, on what the Bible's macro story is. These are my words plucked from the sky. So, so my view of the Bible is, God loves all of creation and wants us to live into that love, such that we become the best versions of ourselves. That's, that's for all of us. As followers of Christ, we are called to be the hands and the feet, and that's, that's the Lutheran ELCA description of God's love to all of creation, dogs, cats, two weeks from now, each other, those that believe, those that don't. It's a big, it's a big task. So that's kind of the big, broad, when I look at Scripture, that's kind of where my head goes, the lens through which I look at it. You may have a different one, and, and thank God that the ELCA is not wanting us all to think exactly alike, but I wanted to share that. So the cultural setting, and you might ask, why Corinth? It's thought that Paul wrote Romans while he was sitting in Corinth. He was there about a year and a half or so, longer than most places he was at. And so he wrote from there, and he was very familiar with Corinth. Well, that's an interesting place to be familiar with. It's about 50 miles or so west of Athens. Athens was the cultural and the intellectual center of, of the world, and Corinth was not. It was a port city, unique geography that meant that there were ports coming from both sides, and Corinth was right there. At the time, smaller boats would get rolled over the land, over this little spit of land on logs, so that they wouldn't have to try to sail against the prevailing wind to get to the other side. To move west was hard, to move with the prevailing winds was easier. So what do you have when you have port cities? Think of Navy. You have lots of stuff. You have gambling, you have that. But, but pertinent to our discussion today, there were a lot of brothels. And, and it was everywhere. And I, Mark Allen Powell is a professor of New Testament from Lutheran Seminary in Columbus, Ohio, Trinity. And he said, throughout the empire, the expression, "To act like a Corinthian came to be known, Roman slang for engaging in sexual promiscuity." So it was a, it was a place where, when you were there, you knew lots of things were happening. Rome itself was known for it, but Corinthian was, Corinth was, was the epitome of that. So lots of wildness going on. So that's the environment in which these words are written. Continuing the steps, the actual passage we're talking about here on Romans 1 is, "For this reason God gave them," and I'm citing the NRSV, which is the one we normally read, but it doesn't very much in this. "For this reason God gave them up to degrading passions; their women exchanged natural intercourse for unnatural," key word, "and in some way, and in same way also the men, giving up natural intercourse with women, were consumed with passion for one another. Men committed shameless acts with men and received in their own persons the due penalty for their error." Moving back to the previous slide, one of the really important points is that the brothels were, most often historians believe, young boys and young girls and older women, maybe. But, but the dominant perversion was abuse of children. And so, with that in mind. So now the context within the, the letter of Paul, I mentioned that it was written while he was in Corinth. The theme of the entire letter is that God's salvation is for everyone. Both, he used the term Jew and Gentile, but it was that, in their world, it was Jews and everybody else. So. And that, and that we receive that through faith. Verses 1:26 and 27 are within the description of the world's need for, for redemption. So this whole section's talking about, we need redemption. In the middle of this is kind of a high point of, boy, we really do need redemption. So if you're, you're reading that, knowing that, this is gonna be a challenge to not walk, 'cause I just, talking and walking, but if, if you're, if you're hearing that in Corinth, it's different than if you're hearing it in which it all can today. It's a very different passage. They know what the perversion is, that we are talking about wildness. So in this passage, verse 26 and 27, the Greek word, which in the other, the later version of this, I have that where I can say it, but I'll leave that to, Brian could tell us. Well, I knew it, and I put it in there in, in English letters, but, but it escapes me. But at any rate, it's a word that's translated "natural" or, or "unnatural," the converse. And, and when you look that word up, first off, it's, it's not, it's not a rarely used one. This is one they really understand, in contrast to the next words we're gonna look at. But it's in accord with nature. It's natural, or it's instinctive. So what was going on in Corinth was, people who were instinctively heterosexual were experimenting, wild and abusing children. That's, that's what was happening there. So go to the next slide. We're looking at the other two. This one gets more challenging because they're, well, let me read it, and then I'll get to it. "Do you not know that wrongdoers will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not deceive, be deceived. Fornicators, idolaters, adulterers, male prostitutes, sodomites, thieves, degreedy, drunkards, revilers, robbers, none of these will inherit the kingdom of God." And then the pertinent Timothy, 'cause these use the same exact words. A long list of stuff, fornicator, sodomite, slave traders, liars, perjurers, and whatever else, ever else is contrary to sound teaching in this list of vices. These texts, these two words, that, the first one's malakoi, and the second one, I can't recall what, it's long and a lot of syllables, but these are used, one of them's used three times in the entire Bible, and the other one is used twice. We don't know for sure what they mean. We have good, given context, we got good speculation. So what we have here is, and it's changed a little bit over time as we've, as archaeologists have stumbled into words and how they're used and, and that. So it's, it's changed. But, but the first word, malakoi, a meaning of soft, fancy, luxurious, homosexual pervert, effeminate. Scholars think that is referring to the young boys. The, it's sometimes cited as the passive participant in, in the homosexual act, the young boy that doesn't have a choice what's being done to him. The other one is, the, the person that's on the abusing end. That's what scholars best think. Some say, and, and this was back to the Mark Allen Powell, some of scholars think that maybe a better translation is masturbators and male prostitutes. But it's despicable acts when you, when you, especially when you consider the context, that these, in fact, were more likely than, that's not to say adult versions of this wasn't going on, but the predominance of it, the great treat for the, for the sailors coming in was, was children, as, as despicable, as hard for us to think about that. Yeah, well, yeah, there were, there were no, you know, what is, what is a good, what is the test of a good relationship? And the answer is, my answer, mutual, you know, loving partnerships. I mean, from, from Genesis, you know, we talked last week about the Bible's, the translations are done mostly by men. Men looked at the Hebrew and said, looks like partnership. Well, let's call it helper. You know, let's make it a little less than a partner. But the NRSV, thankfully, has, has gone to the partner as a description of a man and wife. And we, as a society and as a world, fall short on that a lot. But, but the, the good relationships, that's what you're looking at. This, none of what was going on in Corinth passed any of those tests. There was not equal power, not a partnership, nothing loving. It was about abuse and that. So, and, and we're not even sure what those words are. We're, we're pretty sure we're in the vicinity of the right, right thing. So what do we get from this? And at this point, we should've had a lot more discussion, but I'm worried about the time. So that's why I'm, we'll, we'll stick to that very quickly. Let me start by saying, this is probably the most important thing on the slides, this tagline at the bottom that you may not be able to see from the back. Very often, the original Greek text is not nearly as clear as our translations make them sound. That's, I think that's a Brandon Scott quote. If it's not, it's in a Brandon Scott book. He was here, retired professor from Phillips. I think, but I think it was he was saying that. He was just a, is a gifted, gifted language scholar. I mean, he's theologian as well, but is really gifted in, in both Greek and Hebrew. And, and that's important to this whole story. So you get back up to the Romans thing. Oh, I am in trouble now. What is natural and unnatural, and what's instinctive? Those are, I mean, there is, that word, there's agreement upon that definition. This, we're not stretching it at all to, to say, that's what, that, the word that's used in there. So for the vast majority of people, you know, and myself included, what's natural to me is, I'm a man and my wife's a woman, and that seems natural to me. And why isn't everybody else like that? Well, God's, God's more interested in diversity than I am, you know. And so, you start, when you look at that, you know, I've thought a lot about this. Who's to say what's natural or unnatural? My daughter had a good friend in high school who was, he was homosexual. I mean, he, just, that's who he was. And one, we had a conversation once, and I said something like, well, is Tanner taking a date to the, a girl to the, to the prom, or something like that? Or, and my daughter went to Metro, so, you know, they're pretty careful about, don't touch these subjects. She said, no, that, that, that just wouldn't seem right. It just, it wouldn't seem right for Tanner to do that. And, and I thought, you know, it would be unnatural to that person. So, and, and so there's, you know, if you, if you take this, which the Romans passage, we have, we do have excellent translation and know what it means, it still doesn't allow us to start judging others. I mean, that's, that's between them and God. What we do have that's clear is to love others. I mean, that, that part of the story, I mentioned these, the Corinthian part, and, and 1 Timothy. What's listed there, and I listed it as prostitution at best and rape of children at worst. It's somewhere in that spectrum. And it's, so, is it a, is it a, does it belong on the list of sins? You betcha. Do we misuse it when we try to apply it to, to a loving relationship? You betcha. That's, and I'm, I mean, I'm getting on my soul box, but that's, that's it. Back to the, the thing here. What do others think? Is this, is there, have I hit you with anything that just doesn't wash? Doesn't make sense? One other, since Bob's here. When we were going through this in about 2009 or 10, I don't remember the exact timing, Bob said something to me as we were just talking over a cup of coffee or something. He said, "When I think about this, the controversy over same-sex recognition." When we think about this, I, I just have to stop and wonder, what would I do if, if someone told me I couldn't love Anne, his wife? And that hit me with the, what would I do, I mean, if they said, you know, the rule, rules are that you can't love your wife. You, you just have to go find somebody else. I mean, that's, I, that's not something, so whatever your status is, think about that. That all of a sudden you say, well, the rest of the world sees it this way, so you're gonna have to do it that way. And it's those little thought experiments that, that we have. I had a college professor that was fond of saying thought experiments, and it stuck, remind us that maybe we don't have it all figured out ourselves. But maybe our, the thing we have figured out is that love.
Yeah, I think that the key here for me is the abuse of power, and in this context, often the abuse of children.
Yes.
Bring that into the here and now, and look at partnership, same-gender partnership. We're really looking at respect, mutual love and support of each other, which is a different relationship to accept and include than relationships where there's abuse of power.
Right. It's, I don't think we've thrown the Bible out here. The, one of the scholars I read said that if you're, if you're gonna be on the other side of this argument, other side of my argument, that the strongest argument is not Leviticus, is not, you know, Sodom and Gomorrah. The strongest argument is the, the Romans argument. It's most clear, et cetera. When you look at it, it's not clear at all. It may be the strong, your strongest argument for the other side, but it's not clear at all. Is it, what is natural to the average may be clear, but to the individual, and what's instinctive for me may be clear, but does that mean it's for you? So, other thoughts?
Thought I have around natural and unnatural. My blood type is A negative. It's not a very positive, it's not very popular blood type. Most of you probably are O positive. If all of you who are O positive get together and say, anybody who doesn't have O positive is not natural, that puts me in the non-natural, unnatural state.
Yeah.
This is where I will bore. And I think that so much of the definition depends upon your previous upbringing, and to that extent, the group that you belong to, the clan that you're a part of, those are all really impactful in the standpoint of how that was defined.
Yeah.
I can't help it. I'm O negative.
Well, now that we know that.
Thinking about the power, in fact, due to two translations, the men were in charge, and did they feel uncomfortable with the fact that, okay, it's abuse of power because knowing that they ruled with a, you know, a heavy hand in the house? So going back even to the Genesis, where people talk about help, that people word is A there, from what I understand. It's in the Bible 21 times. 16 of those are referring to God's relationship with us. So there is not any kind of difference of power, but I wonder if that's where some of it may have come in?
Yeah. It's.
I think one thing too, and you alluded to this a little bit, but just as our understanding, and even how we translate the Bible has changed, and that, an interesting word study is that we can get our hands on Bibles that were printed 100, 200, 300 years ago, and how do the translators then, my understanding is, is that it did allude more to the abuse of, of oldness, that it was more in the middle of the last century, is when things started to shift into that homosexual language. Because as a society, we had a problem with that, and that influenced our translations.
The, the, when I'm looking at this kind of stuff, and in the paper I did back, back when, I, I looked at several different translations, starting with King James, because it truly is ancient. I mean, or, I mean, it's a long, read it, you know, it's a long, long time ago. And, and sometimes those descriptions are more helpful, but they, she spoke last week, Dr. Davidson, about the, you have to make decisions in translating. So, the Jerusalem Bible does a really great job on the Psalms, 'cause they're saying, we're gonna get, we're gonna capture the poetry. That's a decision you have to make. That's a decision you have to make. But that, but you're giving up something when you make those decisions. And, but I do think that, um, the, the, the translators, I've, I've thought a lot about this. Why do, why do, why is this the sin that we're focused on? Why is, why is homosexuality the sin that, that people like to focus on? And the answer is, for most cisgender people, we don't struggle with it. I might struggle with greed. I might struggle with telling the truth all the time with no shadow of a leaning and all of these other sins. But boy, this one, you know, it just doesn't hit me. I've, you know? And so damn, we found a, we found a sin that works for us. I can point the finger out and not in. But the law is written for, you know, for, for us to look inward and accept grace and, and not be pointing it outward. So I'll get off my soul box, but other comments?
So I remember back in oh nine, uh, Ed Gustafson came and spoke to the church and said, if there's over fifty different genes, I think he said that contribute to sexual orientation and identity. And that was.
It's back to that God loves diversity. I mean, it, think about, go walk around in nature. It's stunning and wonderful. And why do we decide this is the one that, no, no, this should not be? So.
And it takes over fifty different genes to make you who you are. And the Bible said God loved you before you were born, and those genes can contribute to that.
Voila. Yeah, yeah. Other, we're at the, we're supposed to be quitting spot, but if you're headed to the other service. Um, other questions? Anybody think I'm in left field? My wife does, but anybody? But she knows I'm in left field, so, but maybe not about this. Well, I appreciate your attention. It's really short. I didn't think, shoot.
Well, I guess last week's, but just so everyone knows, there is the brochure rack down in the comments, um, the RSC work, and we have loaner library books. If people want to, you know, borrow a book and just bring it back. If you want to purchase one, let the church know, or we can purchase them, um, for you. This one in particular is about the clobber passages. There's a couple available, but there are other good resources.
Last, last comments? Okay. Thanks, thanks, folks.